Good evening, everyone. We bring our town, we bring your regular town council meeting for June thirteen. Uh to work. We do have a forum meeting with any data. Ask if you will say it. I play like you get this. You will make it over the comment and.
Bye.
You want to say that on the seat?
A little word spending, but it's still the same. We presented that to the governor and he voted for me today. And so what that provision about after the fire or a disaster, what it said now is what I had already said. Is that structure damaged by fifty percent or more of the market value? Then it has been only come back in full compliance with the current code. And that's what the authority says, and that's what it'll continue to say as we're going to the scene. Um all that other language we had before is all gone. Um we did present this to the governor before with that change. They supported it. They were not concerned with it. But we did recommend the council through this order with that change, which is then what you had according to the statement. Um and they do recommend it was well, that made it recommended. I just put it short over there. You don't have a question. I'm happy.
Thank you, sir. Council, any questions? See none. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Motion to approve my question, but second one, council person. Any further questions, council? See none. Any further? The first concern.
Mayor.
Not much.
Mayor, can you read the title, please?
So sorry.
Read the title.
Read it.
Read the title. Thank you.
Reading of this, I'm sorry. This is a reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one. It's those L T C change, the ten percent limitation provision to non-conforming structures. Thank you, sir. Bring me to read the.
The statute requires you to read the entire title. I'm sorry. Do you want me to bring it to you, mayor?
It's the first one. Meanwhile, we have a. Storm is twenty twenty three dash. The means of the town council. I'm looking at here for a many needs system, non-conforming development extension limitation. I'm making article ten, division ten, eight zero one, eight zero zero. The town of New Year now to the land development road. Station of an existing non-conforming structure. And such expansion does not increase the non-conformity. And such expansion is in full compliance with current land development requirements. Providing standing resources to non-conforming structures related to the construction and the part of the whole. Reconstruction after a fire or others named. Rebuilding in one hundred years. Reconstruction of old houses, box and other certifications and updates that provide you with. Providing the separability application and effectively. Everyone feel better. And that is the thing that I'm sure. Council, next up is item A. This is new under new business. Um there are three sets of town council workshop and or town council meeting. Minutes to be approved. The council is your pride. If you all use as one, or you may pull them. Any comments, questions and concerns? Air regulation, approval, which starts in motion to approve all three. And I'm surprised that it's seven. Person Rose, maybe her question, comments and concerns. See none. Will you go to the council person? All right. Thank you, council. Next up are I N B, and these are additional consent items. These are items C twenty three dash zero two. This is a main street, eight oh three main street variance for the addition of greater than ten percent of non-conforming. The approach and engineer step back or close condition. D R V recommends two as well as C twenty three dash. And this is a so from five of the main streets, envision use for sale on site. So you consumption of beer at the moment that they. D R V recommends approval six of your. Council, you can also approve these in one way or we can pull them and have. Or any questions, concerns of this.
Only one question about the D R V. It was forty two. I just wondered if there was anything specific that they didn't like. Just what it was.
It was it was off the ship question. As a city, what is very interesting of the nice.
Okay.
From what they received as an award.
That the name of the mine next, the area colony.
It's all the day we got all positive response back.
Yes.
And I.
Probably break down on this thing. So.
Okay. Uh I don't think I've nobody else said any comments on it. I make a motion.
Okay, motion to approve I N one, C twenty three dash zero two, review of three minutes. Okay, so second, council person that. Council, any additional questions or concerns?
Yeah.
I did. I did. I didn't separate them because once you started talking about probably the property. Seeing no further questions, we'll begin voting, council.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
So I can see twenty three dash zero two, the eight oh three major grants is proven unanimously. But you asked me here. Next up, let's see twenty three dash one zero. I was seven main streets for the conditional use for sale on site consumption of beer decline F one. D R V recommends approval six of your.
It will be. Right. Did you have a condition in there? We added a fence again.
It is, and it's like the part of the staff before too. So that will be a requirement of this condition.
Okay, because it opens up on the private property.
Correct. So what it will be held to is they will have to put a four foot. Um aluminum rail vector fence at the back side of that patio to prevent access outside.
Outside.
Yes, so that will be part of that group.
What is the access out the back?
They have a patio on the back of the property. And they wanted to, uh, they would use that for part of the people's.
It's true.
Like this.
It's acceptable about going through to a public, public area.
It it my understanding coming to the case of property owners, that was one of the responses we received is that they would have to. Press pass across. So then if I believe one of the disputes in the property owner. About that, but I also that fence on the back side, I believe that would be required by state anyhow for their license. Because they have to control access to and from where that out of being served it consume. So I don't see that fencing as anything more than what they probably have to do. On that part. And I did see with the um somewhat in here and he's not.
I made a motion.
Motion to approve, council person. Presenting.
I'll second it.
Second, I'm certain. Any further caution for not. See none. You can go maybe to the council.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
C twenty three dash one zero five oh seven, main street condition used for sale on site consuming of beer. Uh beer then it will have a this is three minutes. Thank you. Thank you all. Next up, this is the first reading. Sometimes.
It's on your executive summary, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. I copied and pasted that.
Entire in the middle of the stuff. Okay. This evening, this is the first reading for ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero three. The ordinance of the town of Rainier Florida pertaining to health, safety, welfare. Implementing a traffic control program on Oak Street by installing a diversion barrier. At the intersection of Mountain Avenue East and Oak Street for traffic heading north and south on Oak Street. Requiring vehicles traveling north on Oak Street and left on to Mountain Avenue. And vehicles traveling south on Oak Street to turn left on to Mountain Avenue. Providing signage and notification to the emergency agency to meet terms, providing. Providing findings, separability and effective aid. Since this is our first reading, there is no. Vote required to see me, but if council has any question.
I would, yeah, I would ask that.
I was surprised we didn't have a line because it was not sound.
I don't know.
Come back to me.
Okay. Saving it for something special.
Fair enough. Even that. The ordinance doesn't have any sort of criteria, so that's separate. Later. Yeah, I don't count. Yeah, in this order. Yes, it moves it was in line that later to add our next council meeting, the public area, any negative comment? No, that's the main question. We're concerned. We guess this. Right.
Twenty twenty three is for our two is for the downtown. Um. Special.
Guys, what's up? Next up is I continue the ordinance that's a legal for procedures. I think it should be twenty twenty three dash four. This is for the twenty twenty where municipal election day, Madison Garden and it's a ball on base. Motion to approve, council person. Very current council. Any questions or concerns, council? Do you leave it? See none. We will be voting, council.
I.
The resume twenty three dash four, we even don't need select, we can just work and all on the. As we names. Next up is I N B. This is. House nine installation installation of crosswalk near recreation on Park Avenue for an amount. Of twenty three thousand nine hundred dollars of seven hundred fifty electric thermal class. That recommends approval. Time to present it all on this item.
I will, yes. Let me borrow Robert's. So I would like to just take this opportunity to thank the wine and dines, a student of their generosity that were able to do this. Um this is a priority list that's been set by the long range planning committee. And so this is number two on that list. It's over by Windomere Recreation Center. Has to be a mid block crossing though, because of the type of crosswalk. So it'll it'll be, you know, where that parking lot. Is off to the side. The crosswalk could be more in alignment with that to cross Park Avenue. Um just because it can't be at the entrance, has to be mid block. And that's all I have. And thank you again to mine and done.
I appreciate you.
And um why did you go with this standard instead of the hundred and five thousand?
That the other crosswalk.
Oh, I see.
Yes. So I got all three that long range planning had done at the same time. And I went back and just verified that those prices were pulled and I was grateful what they did.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just say you all know this is a great big crosswalk at one eighty nine. I mean.
And and those are not, and those are not getting expensive.
No, we already did not. Eight thousand on that.
Create, obviously create a benefit and always be certain.
And I have one reason.
Anything I want to say now, what are you doing?
Yeah, I will remember.
Any additional conservative questions, council? Just a note. Looks like it's a proverb.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Yes. Yeah, that's not the crosswalk.
Especially for a fish. Location. Everything is. Hey. Molly, would you like to make a motion? Motion to approve, the council person. Second, but second. Uh let's begin voting, council person.
Hi.
All right. And I am, I am, that's as you can see. Next up is I N G, this is twenty twenty three. We need more, they increase. And. Give us the details on that.
Boss man.
Yes, like the director obligation that we got, uh, it looks to increase for the C P I. I said in the contract. They had an increase about four point one eight uh since last year and five point four one since this year, actually April, April for the C P I. Um it is something that we understand is just off the business. And I included in their packet and yeah, treatment on impact as to the future residents. Um and we tell the council direction on this because we haven't started getting the substance out of the past. You know, change or usually need a little bit. But room in there. So we not had enough room to sign up to the government. The reason why we're not. With things that we're working on with adjacent. Such properties, yes, and we can afford that cost. Understood.
Mayor, would be to with respect to that question you asked, in the special appointment hearing last year. I took into consideration that you might have these bomb offs in your every year of the contract. So we wrapped it in there. So you will not have to have the extra special appointment public hearing each year.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay. We've been ahead of you and sometimes you fans, sometimes. Be over on this.
I have a question. Yes. So they tell me that eighty five percent of the trucks are recycling it decline. They go to the regular front. Right, but they told us.
Right.
Okay. So I'm wondering if it's even worth that recycling. I know coming from me that sounds like. Oh, yes. But. But I mean, not either we have to teach people how to do it, or we're wasting our. Seventy six dollars and fifty cents a year for home, in my opinion.
But we did talk about this in the in the contract. I share your concern on that. I don't know what. I don't know how to read the middle of the contract rooms, but we didn't have that flexibility to change that.
And and one more thing, because we usually have bins. And I'm wondering if it was better when we have the bins and people had to separate a little bit. Would that be better for that?
Uh that's ways for us to see what their number for fire to um. Going to the street recycling. Uh but all it takes is one bad load and it runs the whole entire one piece box and that moves in by.
And therefore, I can't even imagine that they're getting eighty five cents. Play for.
Right.
Out of a thousand fifty homes, somebody are gonna put something in. Every week. So I think this is a raise of people's money unless we come up with some brilliant way of keeping people to do it right. Like maybe with the analysts, then it's a monitor. So I don't know. I'm just saying.
So this is a, I mean, I need. I know that in Orlando, I would be actually including inspectors, you know, to do this. But that is, they literally do that to to check people's.
And then they should get down, people that put that stuff in media and people warning.
That's what happened.
Regarding, did we get what's that? Yeah, and it's because what they do is they do, they'll be side litter, they do their litter. So they pull the bed, put on a park lifter, it's a dump, and then you have an individual looking and seeing what's in there. And if you have anything that's in it, they can be, it's not supposed to be in it, or the star or something else, then they'll put a yellow tag on it. Um I've only had one dip on me and I never did it again, but. Um, yeah, I'm not sure what they would do if you keep violating that. Um and not only just to get your cycle loose.
Yeah, and I think you need to do some like. So maybe, I mean, I probably played twice and had it all be good. Then the day this and then basically it's not working.
How are you going to believe for us to see if we can come up with?
As we talked to the guy about that, I didn't have to gain five percent, which is like a. Feel good, know what I'm doing, you know, it probably. Um and they. My impression, these states, my impression was that they can get just clean cardboard because of all the deliveries that it gets every day. With cardboard, paper products, without the piece box. Which I'm gonna buy for my piece boxes. So I can buy just clean cardboard. I know we're not separating my tracks. So we make a move that we only do just clean cardboard. We probably get one of the.
All those deliveries.
Yeah. I mean, we get that at my house, only the other side of it was clean cardboard.
So I think we did, we also had, I said, we did have some orders that keep on this, I think, last year. Well, it's so much. We're being picked up, yeah, that this got kicked. Now, and I kind of feel like that's how we end up here because we did discuss the additional education needs. I really feel like the challenge with recycling means people do more is better. They don't know that.
Yeah, they don't, they don't understand that the whole strategy.
I think that. I don't think most people bear of that.
So, all right, so it's not appropriate now, but if we put it on the agenda, maybe the next month, then you have ways for them to talk to us and give us their.
Yeah, I see what they're going to do. The little ideas and thought through the city. I know we're not going to broadcast this meeting. Um but in that.
We can have that. Just give us. A very promising. They did. They totally did it one hundred percent. You did, like I said. We were so, it's not. Because that's right, you're only can report to them, they can go pick it up. So it was such a challenge that I think we really doubled down on that and that's what.
We need to make a motion.
Maybe the motion group.
Make a motion.
For a second from council person. It was. Any additional comments or concerns, council? See none. Anybody else?
Hi.
Uh, hi. I N G, based right from the new three twenty three, we're waiting. Uh passing in, so with the council's uh request, we have an incoming. Uh improvements are formal business, the city council. Um couple quick uh items for myself. For everyone to be mindful that uh today is the anniversary of the shooting, what the people lost a lot of. Was. The, I believe, this is the second largest match you need in the state. Important that we remember. Um and also Paulie Hearn passed away this past weekend. So we can do about this year and we thought some very good. All. There was a few council person.
Okay, um it may be some information to share with you guys. Um first, there'd be sites for crosswalks. We um been in our wine and dining over the last year. So we are ten year. Um has issued over a hundred thousand dollars um to local organizations servicing or even. Please support the women and male food storage. I mean, we donated like. Eight hundred thousand dollars or something like that and overall a hundred thousand going right. And um February third, twenty twenty four will be the next one in our wine and dine. And. Like to know what's happening with the settlement. The ten of it again. Apparently it's coming up.
Yeah, you get that.
That with the end.
Where on Wednesday's day, right? I probably did hear.
Anyways, the little um we need to really do by the thing on next call tomorrow. Okay, so we'll talk about it.
Uh.
Anything for me, council?
Yeah, we uh attended the project meeting, the notes are in the. Apparently the the night, it also defended the support advisory council. General Lando um apprentice meeting, the parent, the parent, the mother, the father, the parent, the parent. Traffic insurance, the parent, the rest um going forward, so. First. We got a county in two months. Any, anyone's. Yeah. Little lies from the person. Yes, you will. Uh, then I got a county two months. I require a, that's pretty important, first, you apply for me.
Uh presumably it's nothing really worth it. James and Danny. That seems like one I remember. Get a lot of emails. What happened? We'll move to uh staff reports. I'll be real brief again, as Molly said, we're working on the facility point three twenty four budget. Uh things looking pretty good as far as driving these personal managers. Um you know, we're still waiting on the beginning of some more general plans as well as our health insurance, but we're tapping it. Pretty much that what we have right now. Uh and just working with the CrossFit Shield on making sure that we can afford a good plan, a good healthy plan for our um team. Uh but again, we will be numbers for that for about sixty days. Um but because our pool is a little bit better now, I'm not gonna say why, but it is. Um you know, hopefully those are moving in and around, but we're um. Probably about seventy percent of the years, but we still adore that with the current budget. Uh D R V is going to consider the five hundred block development next week, and it's two days, February six thirty. Um so if you're issued that, just come by and this is in on the presentation. Uh appropriations, we're still waiting on uh the governor deciding them. From what I'm seeing, yes, the providing the budget, I mean, has fifteen days in order to sign the budget, it's on a visa. Um it's now the thirteenth and the new fiscal year starts on July first, so I'm hoping that it'll get that done pretty quickly. Uh the building workshop's gonna be on June twenty seventh. And I'll be out from June twenty third to the twenty eighth.
Now taking two months off, like. Get two weeks off, man.
It is, I get it per.
Time.
Just wanted to report that we've had positive comments about the gate access system down at Fernwood. We've had a couple of issues and thankfully they were easy to sort out. We've installed the mag walk there, so people can't try to push their way through anymore. And secondly, the eye on the sensor was misbehaving, which was causing the gate to open and and close. Um when no one was there, but that was under warranty stuff, been repaired and the gate should be operating effectively now. It's my report.
Pretty much the day was new game.
The pedestrian gate works just fine. Actually, thank you for bringing that up. I'm happy that you that you mentioned that. Yeah, one, one thing that I do want to mention is that um the code works at the pedestrian gate. And so if you're coming down to Fernwood just to walk around the park and you're not driving a boat in, these are the pedestrian. they use the pedestrian gate, because it doesn't have the huge motor that the vehicle gate does, and, and it's more wear and tear the more you open that, so I do want to remind people that if you're just walking down to Fernwood, utilize pedestrian gate, your same code works there. Yes, yes, so people who want to use the pedestrian gate from our residence, but do not have a boat, just come down to town administration, and we'll put you in with a code, and, and there's no charge for that. Yes.
Free to.
Yes.
So, latest, great, this certainly knows, it's gotta be, and. So they just created, calling everybody, did this, go up, and they brought the case, and they're going to do that to, so that's, uh, benching teams.
Oh.
But we had a camera, yeah, I think we did, I will say this, that, it's a huge improvement. So that, that, that is our, so all streets is totally different. Develop a racetrack, running, looking for a place to play in the vice down the path, whatever goes on, so that's our, thank you very much. Everybody, and I'm zero negative by, at us, as.
I expected the first week it went in, my phone would blow up because people's codes weren't working, and I had nothing, it was nice and quiet.
Well, you know, it's. Mind everybody, I do something like this, it, it helps to solve the problem, but it comes with some inconvenience for all of those that live here, and all of those that. That is, that's the, that's the real one on these things. So there's a. That. Congress.
Yeah. Just two quick things. Let us talk about. Now, it's, two quick things, uh, the governor did sign the law requiring all the elected municipal officials to file the form six, financial disclosure. Um, sorry about that, unfortunately, and then there's a change to the cop car law that was signed recently, which requires a person under eighteen years of age, you should have a valid driver's learner's license, or a valid driver's license, so it basically changes the age to, um, fifteen, sort of, to. So we'll be making that change in the next year, October first is when it's about.
That's great, I mean. Because we just did it to you.
We just did, yeah, we'll have to.
Okay, all right. It's because we. Okay.
I try to, yeah, the guys, we're, we're, we're actually, we're doing very well on it. We're not having any issue with that, so great job on the, and again, we've been working on that, we'll make sure we, uh, we do an educational campaign before that, we have plenty of time left, but.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, we're just working on that very loosely, but it's.
I think that we should, uh, in the next is a, make a big statement about the age for golf carts, because I know, I had an age of nine and fourteen, right?
Eight, right, so.
We can make sure, yeah, it's probably good timing anyway, instead of the, it'll be out.
Yeah, um, that, and, and, you know, I always the police department does it, and I will go to the number one way to prevent issues that you're, is to watch cars. It's summer time, people like to do the locks, and see if they can find, it's, it's, it's.
I think the entire town of Lainerford, almost wasn't there, now we've had one bar, window door better, like everyone else.
Right, isn't unbelievable, and, yeah, so really, really, really makes a difference, all your neighbors' garage, it was, well, um, it'll prevent a lot of it just probably makes it nine, the issues. And with that, unless there's any additional chat, or, or, or.
Thanks, my husband.
There's nothing else related, we, we will, uh, determine at six thirty, we're.